So I'm ready to talk to everybody and say, come on. And.
Hi there. I just was wondering if I had volume?
Yes, you're good, Meredith.
Okay, thank you. How are you guys doing today?
Uh, good, knock, knock wood.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping for the best. Yep, and we are live on Facebook. Let me send out a. Stephen wants in.
How's my sound, Molly?
You're good. I hear you great.
Thank you.
And we're live on Facebook. Just, oops, somebody else's cut, Lou. Let me make sure this is the right Eric. Hey, how are you? I like him not, I like that.
Molly, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, just making sure.
And Eric?
Hi.
Hi. You're Eric Zartman?
That's right.
Great, great, where you're good. It'll be a while before we get to you, but. I'll let council know you're here.
Yeah, I think you appreciate it.
All righty. Jerry Terry. Hi, Mr. Terry, welcome.
Oh, how are you?
Good. You will come very quickly, right? Pretty quickly. Well, we'll do comments first, community comments, so. I'll unmute you when you need to be ready, all right?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Shh, hush. We're just waiting on Councilmember Baker.
Okay, is Councilmember Cotner, is he on? I didn't see him. Okay.
He's right below you.
No, no, he's not. Eric is.
Oh, oh, it's different for everybody then, okay.
Well, I'm here either way.
There he is.
Angie, I think you need to unmute first. You are muted.
Just start again.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. The time is now six thirty-two. Today is July thirteenth, Reynoldsburg City Council meeting. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins. This meeting is being held through electronic conferencing and livestreamed on the city's Facebook page. Molly, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Cotner.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Pecaro.
Yeah.
And President Jenkins.
Here. Next, we will have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands as approved. We'll have the approval of the City Council Regular Meeting minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Approval of City Council's Special Meeting Minutes of July seventh, two thousand and twenty. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have community comments. Molly, did you receive any comments from the community?
Yes, I did. We have two members who are actually live, so I'm going to ask Eric Rogers to go first, and then John Hague will be next. Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. President Jenkins, uh, I don't, I may not have a comment this evening. Actually, I have more of a question in the packet that was sent out. Am I correct in that, beginning at page ninety-two, is the revised, the most recent version of the mask ordinance? If it is, I think my questions may be resolved, or my comments may be resolved, but if not, I'd like to have clarity, please.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, the most current version will be, uh, there is a memo page, and I believe that may start on page ninety. And then the ordinance immediately following that will be the most current. Plus, further back, there will be a red line version showing what those changes were.
Correct. I think we're on the same page, and there is a red line version, then following, there's a clean version, beginning at ninety-two. Um, so I would like to, uh, thank the council for hearing concerns of the community. Uh, I would like to thank Attorney Chris Schuck for attempting to address my particular concern by adding language into the mask ordinance and carving out an exception down in, I believe, it's now section three M that would address the possibility for, uh, you know, abuses in enforcement of that mask requirement for private vehicles that are not being used for commercial purposes. So with that clarity I've been giving, I thank you for your time, and I have no further comment on the mask ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Hague, if you want to go ahead. We're waiting for you to unmute.
I apologize.
That's all right. You're good.
Thanks, thanks, great pressure. Uh, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for, for hearing my comments. I really did just want to reiterate once again how strongly I support this ordinance and appreciate that you are taking the lead on this, one of the, one of the cities in the forefront. Uh, it's becoming clear to me that we need this on a statewide basis, but we have to do what we can do here. Um, I did want to just pose a question because I was unable, through the website, to find the most recent version of the ordinance to ask exactly what the exceptions are for people that will be able to not wear a mask. And I realize it's very difficult to enforce, but as, as I spoke to last week, if it turns out that we go into the grocery store and half the people are not wearing masks, uh, it, have you contemplated at all if there are any measures that the city can take? Uh, I realize it would, if people are reacting badly to a mask mandate, then having to prove that they have some kind of medical condition would be, uh, onerous to, to most people. But this pandemic is going like a wildfire in a way that one has to ask, if that turns out to be the reaction of the community, what would the council contemplate doing in that case? So, um, I just want to reiterate my support, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Have a great day. All stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Hague. Council President, there are some other comments that were emailed in that I would like to read for council. Council for the public would have received copies of all of these comments earlier. Any comments that may have needed to be edited due to length will be included in totality, and all attachments submitted will be included as part of the final minutes for the final record. The first comment comes from Stephen Carter. Dear Councilmember, dear Councilmembers, many jurisdictions are basing their face mask policy on guidance from the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, the CDC. The CDC has flip-flopped on its position on face covering several times since March, but is now recommending that everyone wear a mask in public. This recommendation is not supported by strong empirical evidence. Though there is science to support mask wearing, there's also a preponderance of science showing that masks can cause considerable harm and are ineffective in preventing the spread of coronavirus. There is also no sign, science supporting the use of masks by healthy individuals. So emergency orders that are being issued to help protect. Are actually hurting individuals' physical and emotional well-being and violating their basic human rights, constitutional rights, and religious rights. Evidence that masks reduce the transmission of viral respiratory infection within community settings is equivocal at best. A recent meta-analysis that included nearly a dozen randomized controlled trials and ten observational studies found that there is, was no clear clinical or laboratory confirmed evidence that masks prevent infection. Even the U.S. General has noted that masks are not effective in preventing the general public from catching the coronavirus. In terms of harms, studies show that wearing a mask covering reduces blood and tissue oxygenation, which can be deadly while increasing carbon dioxide levels. The use of masks can also increase the risk of infection and the spread of viral illness, hinder detoxification that occurs through exhalation, impair the immune system, and cause a wide range of other physical and psychological issues. Moreover, some masks have been found to contain known carcinogens, which put people at risk from inhaling toxic chemicals and having them come in contact with their skin. There is no science to support the use of masks by healthy individuals, and the World Health Organization backed this up when it said WHO stands by recommendations to not wear masks if you are not sick or caring for someone who is sick. Forcing healthy individuals to wear face coverings is a completely unnecessary intervention that dehumanizes their interactions with others. More important, it eliminates the right to make informed decisions about what risks and precautions they are willing to take. It is unethical and unconstitutional to subject healthy, law-abiding citizens to measures that can result in physical and emotional harm and that impinge on the ability to move freely throughout society. For those with deeply held religious beliefs, mask mandates violate their ability to abide by a natural law and follow their convictions to walk in faith, not fear. As such, the decision to wear a mask is a highly personal one and should not be universally mandated. Measures that are meant to protect the community as a whole are not effective if they hurt individuals in that community. Mandatory medicine and mandated interventions such as social distancing and mask wearing have no place in a free society. Citizens want to maintain the right to make responsible decisions about what is best for themselves and their children based on their own unique circumstances. I urge you to do the right thing, stand for choice, and protect all individuals by encouraging, not mandating, the use of face masks in the community. This policy can be bolstered by asking at-risk populations and those who are sick to self-quarantine with society taking the best care of them possible. Thank you for your continued leadership during these unprecedented times and for upholding the health and rights of your constituents. Next, we hear from Carrie Schroeder. I know that council will be voting on the face mask ordinance at the regularly scheduled meeting on July thirteenth. I missed the timeframe frame to send in comments for the emergency meeting, which was held last week. I have been a citizen of Reynoldsburg for twenty-five years now. All three of my kids graduated from Reynoldsburg, and two of them still live here as well. I obviously like the city or would have moved by now. I am not living in the area of Reynoldsburg, that is, I am now living in the area of Reynoldsburg, that is Licking County. The ordinance that you are voting on will affect where I live and shop since it is Reynoldsburg, but not Franklin County. I want to present the latest data and ask what is the justification for passing the mandatory face masks in Reynoldsburg? I have attached the latest reports from the Licking County Health Department, which clearly show there have been no active cases in Reynoldsburg for the past thirty days. I have also attached a link to an article from the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons, which shows their findings when doing actual studies regarding the face masks that are being worn in our community right now. They also cite a few other credible links outlining the same information. I believe face masks should be a personal choice and not an ordinance or law for many reasons. I implore you to please review the attached data and article prior to the final vote. Again, that attached data will be part of the final draft of the minutes. This statement comes from Susan B. Tappan-Williams. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the Reynoldsburg City Council my statement in support of mandated face masks in public. Face masks and coverings offer many benefits. I would like to share three. One, extended courtesy. It's hard to recall a time when extending a common courtesy resulted in a political debate about lost freedoms. Those who choose to wear a mask yell the loudest that they are in jeopardy of losing their rights and freedoms. They see, but seem oblivious to the part in restricting the rights of those that choose actions that support health and well-being. I have failed to cover, if I fail to cover my mouth when I sneeze or cough in the presence of others, I would likely be called rude and insensitive. Likewise, covering our mouths and wearing a mask in public during the devastating pandemic is not a political maneuver to restrict rights, but a simple gesture of courtesy that extends the right to pursue health. Two, promote safety. Even more than courtesy, wearing a mask to prevent the spread of COVID-19 is an issue of safety. Wearing a face mask or face coverings protects me, and it protects you, protects you. When did I become a bad thing to look out for our neighbors? Mandating safety measures for society at large is not a new concept. Our society errs on the side of safety for the masses over and over. We require parents to vaccinate their children. We protect, prohibit smokers from smoking in public places because secondhand smoke is unhealthy to the masses. We set laws, uh, around driving. There is nothing good that is gained by a driver under the influence of alcohol getting behind the wheel. Number three. Protect resources. Mandating face masks and other coverings extends courtesy to others and promotes safety. But there is one final benefit to consider. That benefit is to protect a non-expendable resource, i.e., a nurse. When you choose to not wear a mask, I am at risk and many others in my profession. There was a nursing shortage before the pandemic. We run the risk now of perpetuating this shortage. As the number of COVID-19 patients increase in our hospital, so does the risk for those who dedicate their lives to caring for the sick. Most healthcare workers signed up for a job they knew would have some risk. However, healthcare workers have a fighting chance of avoiding illness in a controlled setting like a hospital. Just like many others, first responders are unknowingly exposed to COVID virus when those we encourage don't practice social distancing and refuse to wear a mask in grocery stores, restaurants, and other public places. Expert advice is usually valued. We need surgery. If we need surgery, we seek out a surgeon. If my car doesn't start, my next call is to a mechanic. We need, we should heed the advice of experts on coronavirus. The CDC recommendations are clear: wearing the face masks are essential in preventing the spread of COVID virus. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Instead of viewing mask wearing as a restriction to our rights and freedoms, rather we should view mask wearing as a gesture of courtesy that promotes safety and protects a non-expendable resource, our first responders. So I encourage you to make tough choice now for all of us so we can protect our families and get our community back to work on a happy, healthy, and prosperous life. The next comment is from Gracie Cooper, uh, an LPN. Hello, my name is Gracie Cooper, and I would like to appeal to the City Council and the residents of Reynoldsburg to pass an ordinance requiring face coverings in public. I'm a nurse who works with hospice patients and families, and as such, I feel it is my duty to advocate for the reduction of transmission of COVID-19. My patient population is at high risk of having their limited time stolen from them by this deadly virus. By implementing the mandatory use of masks, we can reduce the chances of transmission by eighty-five percent, according to the World Health Organization. I am also the mother of four beautiful children who would like to see them live in a community that is concerned for the health and welfare of those around them. Wearing a mask does, does less for personal protection than it does to protect those around us from unknowingly spreading the virus. As citizens that care about our community, implementing a mask ordinance ensures the preservation of our economy, personal health, and well-being. And the last comment is from David Stares. Since I won't be able to get to the meeting itself, nor do I use Facebook, Twitter, MySpace, et cetera, I must resort to this method of asking a question. My question is, since schools have been shut down since March, and at the rate things are going will remain so till at least October, will residency a reduction in our property taxes in two thousand and twenty-one or on our county-city taxes? Madam President, that is all the comments that I have received.
Thank you for reading all of the community comments this evening. Do we have any comments from council? Do we have any comments from the mayor?
Yes, Madam President, I do have a few comments, uh, non-COVID related. Uh, first of all, I wanted to say welcome, everyone, uh, councilmembers, presidents, as well as those watching at home. July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and if you've been paying attention to our, uh, social media feeds, you've been seeing that different members of our Parks and Rec community have been recognized for their contributions. So I do have a proclamation that I will read for them. Whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities all over the country, including Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas, participating in recreation programs builds family values and family unity, strengthens neighborhood involvement, offers opportunity for social interaction, enhances education, develops creativity, and promotes cultural diversity. Whereas, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecology of our beautiful community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, Reynoldsburg Parks and Recreation is committed to providing safe, fun, and accessible parks, trails, recreation facilities, and leisure opportunities for all Reynoldsburg citizens. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Now, therefore, I, Joe Begany, Mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, proclaim July two thousand and twenty as Parks and Recreation Month. So thank you to all of those members of the Parks and Recreation Team that, again, you can look at our Parks and Rec social media feed and kind of get an idea about how vast and skilled some of our workers are. I also have a notice, a community member, uh, who wishes to remain anonymous, is organizing a toy drive this weekend. Now, I know you're thinking to yourself, a toy drive in July. Um, this community member basically is looking at the opportunity to provide toys for anyone that are outdoor facilities would benefit from, squirt guns, things like that, outdoor toys, something to get kids to be able to play in. So I'll read a little bit of the statement. With a summer full of cancellations and unusual times, help our Reynoldsburg children have an awesome summer, complete with new or gently-used toys. For the safety of our volunteers and staff, please maintain appropriate social distancing this Saturday, uh, July eighteenth, from ten AM to one PM at, uh, City Hall, where you'll have the opportunity to drop off your new or gently-used toys. Uh, where it will be organized and categorized and made sure that they are clean, and then we will have a distribution, uh, the following Saturday on July twenty-fifth, from ten AM to one PM, again, here at, uh, City Hall. Again, the big thing they're looking at is things for fun, kids to go out, uh, basketball, small footballs, things like that, where they can go out and enjoy the, uh, the area. This particular project is actually thought of, um, by a young gentleman who is looking forward to make a contribution, uh, in a private way for citizens in Reynoldsburg. So I asked that everybody be aware of that. If you can promote that on your social media feeds, that would be amazing. Uh, you'll see a flyer for this go out on our social media pages sometime by probably midday tomorrow. Um, those are the only comments that I have for right now, so I thank you for this time.
Madam President. Repeat exactly what time that's going to be this Saturday, the eighteenth?
Yes, uh, Saturday, the eighteenth, from ten AM to one PM here at City Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Hague for coming in, and now I'm going, I just want to let them know we're going to release them from the meeting as, uh, community comments is ending. Thank you.
Next, we will have a presentation from Mr. Gary Terry from our Reynoldsburg YMCA.
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to speak with the council about what is going on here at the YMCA. I'd just like to take a few minutes and tell you a little bit about the hours that we have here and some of the program that's going on at the YMCA. We did open up on June 8 with restricted hours, our new hours under COVID-19 restrictions are from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and that's Monday through Friday. We shut down for about four hours for deep sanitizing, cleaning, and then Monday through Thursday, we'll open back up at 4:00 p.m. and remain open until 8:00 p.m. We only have Saturday morning hours, which is from 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. So those are our new hours. Programming-wise, on June the 29th, we started our group exercise classes back up. Those are classes such as yoga and bootcamps. And then on July the 1st, we did reopen our pools also. Our pools, which are a big thing, our schedule for our pools. Our indoor pool is open from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and that is for swimmers, those that want to exercise in the pool. Our pools are, our outdoor pool is open from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that's on Monday through Thursday. And it's open on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and that's family time. Now, there have been some restrictions on pools in that we have to have reservations. Part of the guidelines that we received from Franklin County Health Department was that we had to have spacing. So it's set up such that our members, we're only allowing members into the Y at this time, no visitors or guests. It's set up such that our members can reserve pool time or group exercise class time seventy-two hours in advance of the start time of the, of the time that they would like to be in the pool or the group exercise class. I can tell you it's gone fairly well. We do have a lot of folks that want to get in the pool. And, you know, we've felt a little of the frustration of not being able to get into a pool, especially in this community that's been starved for that type of recreation. One of the things that is now a requirement here is that masks are required to be worn inside the YMCA. But the requirement is only for our common areas and our hallways, our restrooms and locker rooms. Folks are not required to wear their mask while they are working out. Starting here from the future, we are looking at starting up our child watch services. We don't have a definitive date as of yet. Before we shut down, almost half of our memberships were from families. Some of the things that we're offering right now do not make it easy for families to come. Our child watch services, which was very, very important to a lot of our members, has not reopened. But we know that there are restrictions on the number of children that we can have in any one room. So we're looking at restarting our child watch services, hopefully sometimes within the next thirty to forty-five days. Our swim lessons, which was another big draw here at the YMCA, is another program that we're looking at starting back within the next thirty to forty-five days, as well as our water fitness classes, which are popular among our seniors. So that is where we stand now. If you have any questions, I could fill those questions for you.
Hello, good evening. This is Councilwoman Strickland. I do have a question for you. Director Terry, regarding the pool area, so I know their families have to RSVP. Is there a time slot or how many hours someone can be in the pool? Or is it just making the reservations for them to really to access the pool?
Sure, there is a time slot. On our indoor pool, which is, I said, for our lab swimmers, when they make a reservation, they're making a reservation for forty-five minutes. Now, everyone has the same start and stop time. So in the mornings, we have a 6:15 to 7:00, 7:00 a.m., and then a 7:15 to 8:00 a.m., and then an 8:15 to 9:00 a.m. So we have five slots in the morning, four lanes. So four individuals can sign up, you know, in an hour. So in the reality, we have six hours in the morning. So that affords twenty-four individuals the opportunity to come in and exercise in the pool, in the indoor pool. On the outdoor pool, because of social distancing, we have our pool set up into groups. So there are six groups are what we call pods. And in each one of those pods, we can have up to six individuals. So max in the pool is thirty-six individuals. Each pod can have up to six people that would accommodate a family. The times in the evening are reserved for up to an hour and a half. So it would be from 6:15 to, I believe it's 7:45. I'm sorry, 6:15 to 7. I'm sorry, 4:15 to 5:45 and 6:15 to 7:45. So there again, we have two separate times that they could sign up for the outdoor pool.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions from council?
Yes, I have a one question I'm seeing in the Facebook that if we paid, if we, if we paid for classes that started in March, the water yoga will be changed again or have priority registration? Is there anything like that?
Sure, those individuals that have paid for a class, once we start those classes back up, they would, their spot is already reserved for them. So we will not open any of those classes up to outsiders until we have serviced those folks that have already paid for the class and attended one or two of those classes.
Do we have any other questions from council? Well, it looks like we don't have any other questions. I just wanted to say that I drove down the street that had been paved Davidson and was able to see the pool for the first time last week, and it looks amazing. I was really impressed. I was actually surprised because I wasn't sure what it was going to look like. But it looks amazing from looking outside the fence. But hopefully someday I'll be able to come by because I love swimming in the outdoors. But it does look truly amazing. So congratulations on the pool area because it looks really nice. So congratulations on that.
Thank you, and I think many of our members are appreciative that we are open when a lot of the other pools in the area are not, so.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, well, thank you for your time and, and coming to speak to us and our community. I really appreciate that and giving us an update because a lot of gyms have opened up, but you just don't have enough information to know exactly what they're doing and how they're doing things. I'm looking forward to coming to the swimming lessons, so I'll be looking for that information for my grandson, who I've been wanting to do that for quite a number of months lately, and we haven't been able to do that. So I'll be looking for that information as well. So thank you very much for giving us the updates.
Thank you, Madam President, and we'll look forward to seeing you here.
Thank you. We don't have any other communications for this evening, so we're going to move into our work session. This work session for discussion, a motion to approve a resolution to appoint members to the Reynoldsburg Community Commission. Mayor Begany or Attorney Shook, would you like to begin this discussion?
Madam President, I can start off, and then Chris can get into some of the specific details. As you all know, Councilwoman Strickland requested a, the formation of a community commission, a number of them to address certain things that have come up that are interest to community members here in Reynoldsburg. And this will allow us to form some formal commissions. They can make recommendations to council on a various number of objects. The first particular ones that have come up, obviously, is military recognition, new Americans, neighborhood beautification. Trying to figure out transportation, which is a big one on that one, as well as the police commission, City Attorney Shook kind of described in just a little bit. We have put the information out, and we are getting a number of people coming in. We actually have, depending upon which topic it is, we're from five to eight people for a majority of the major topics. But we've also had a couple of other suggestions as well that we'll try and fold in. We have an arts and leisure slash cultural amenities. We have basically a live performance committee, specific groups for children and family, things to address issues with homelessness, youth commission or council. And actually, one that was kind of interesting was more about disinformation and critical thinking. And I think this was more about different styles of way to get the information out about what's going on in the community. The overriding goal is to have these commissions kind of take a life of their own and kind of come up with things that would help improve the areas that they are, you know, starting out. So let's say neighborhood beautification, what exactly does that mean? How does that look? Some people have suggested that similar issues that have gone on in Columbus, where they've been able to address how to actually improve the quality of life in neighborhoods with flowers, neighborhood beautification, things like that. And the idea would be that sometime after the, after the names, the window is closed for submissions, which is next Monday, you would have, we would organize this, and then we probably would arrange virtual town halls, very similar to what we're doing right now on a Zoom, and then let those individual groups kind of take the lead after laying some groundwork. The groundwork is more or less, it's where the teacher and me is going to come out, kind of a goal-oriented thing, where we're actually looking at a certain amount of timeline before you have some of these objectives listed. So that way, they can present to council what they think these things should be. So let's say military recognition. With that one, I would assume that it would be something, how would we recognize military veterans or active-duty members right now with our future memorial plaza that is finishing up construction here in the not-too-distant future? What kind of ceremonies would we have on 9/11 Veteran Day, things of that nature, along with the other ones? I don't want to get too specific on what any of the, with any of the frameworks are, because I want these things to kind of take an organic feel for what the community wants, not necessarily a top-down vision about what the city thinks should be in the best interest of everyone. I think those people that are volunteering to do this will be able to lead it. I also encourage all members of council, if there's a particular topic that interests them, to kind of join in. Again, not necessarily to lead, but to, you know, have a representation on there. This is not limited to these particular councils. There are other ideas that we can do, depending on which way the wind blows with what everybody's looking for. But have a definitive end sometime within nine to twelve months, whereby that point in time, these commissions would cease to exist after having fulfilled any kind of recommendations to council, and then what council chooses to do with that information at that time is, you know, up to all of you. More popular versions of everything that we have here, obviously, the police commission, which City Attorney Shook will take over. But everyone else, the next one, I guess, would probably say would be the transportation issue. Apparently, there's people that speed here in Reynoldsburg. Who knew? So there's issues about how do we address those types of things in certain neighborhoods, specifically on Priestley. That is one area that comes up, but there might be others out there. I know Bryce Road north of Main Street, I know kind of crisscrosses into Columbus, but as well as the Reynoldsburg side of things as well. Are there options that we can have there? What kind of statistical data do we have to show, are people actually speeding? Or is it something more or less, it looks like they are because you're a stationary person? But again, these are kind of things that kind of, the committees will kind of flesh out. City Attorney Shook, if you want to just briefly mention anything about the police issue for the police commission, we can go ahead and do that as well. I know in addition to what he's about to explain, one thing that we wanted to do is figure out what exactly community policing looks like for the city of Reynoldsburg, to see exactly how that would be set up, and then what those recommendations would be in addition to what City Attorney Shook is going to have. City Attorney?
So we just finished today a first draft on an ordinance to create a citizen review board for the city of Reynoldsburg. We have sent that draft ordinance over to the Fraternal Order of Police, Capitol City Lodge Number Nine, for their review and comment. And I anticipate that it will be on for a work session with council at the July 27 meeting. That will just be a work session, and then in consultation with our Division of Police and the Fraternal Order of Police, as well as recommendations from council, we will draft the final ordinance throughout the August and have it presented to council for a first read in September. And that's just for the police review commission.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Strickland. I do have a question for you. Regarding the interest letters, is it due next Monday or July the 15th?
I must have been mistaken. It could have been July 15.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we give the, those that's interested still in these particular boards, and they have an opportunity to submit their interest letter by July the 15th. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I would note that the motion that is up for a work session this evening is, it's essentially a motion to create a task force that will allow us to, based upon the recommendations of that task force, create this community commission, which can be broken out into these separate committees. And so it's not going to be this, what we, what we have here up tonight as a task force is not a codified standing commission. It would only be a temporary commission that would be formed solely for the purpose and only temporarily during the process of preparing those recommendations to council.
So we are discussing to have a motion at our next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, once the members of the community task force have been identified to put before you for approval, you would vote on that the next meeting.
Yes, okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions from council regarding the resolution to appoint members to the Reynoldsburg Community Commission?
Madam President.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Lawson-Bro.
Thank you. So those members of the community that are interested in participating, they'll write a letter, and then once the letters are received, then who makes the decision of who is appointed to which commission? Does everybody get a trophy or just a certain amount of people?
That was actually just what I was going to say, Councilwoman Lawson-Bro, so thank you for bringing that up. There's, there's really no criteria for these particular commissions. The police commission is a separate entity, so we'll leave that for further discussion after everyone's had a look at the legislation. But as far as military recognition, transportation, new American states, basically based on interest. Most people that have submitted their letters are very clear as to which one they would like to be a part on. But they also say, can they be on more than one? Can they, you know, do this one instead of that one? And a few have even been willing to say, I would like to be on this commission, but if that has too many people, I'd be more than happy to go on to this commission. So it's not a criteria-based thing, and it's not going to be a decision that is made by me or anything like, or any kind of other group. This is a chance for community members to continue and to get more involved. And I would hate to sit there and say, oh, you'd love to be involved, but you can't be on this committee. Now, we're going to give everybody their first choice and give them the option because it's their time that, that they're going to donate city for this particular issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have there been any discussions on adding any other community commissions? Have there been any other suggestions as far as outside of the ones that you have recommended?
Yeah, a few of them came up. The one of them, arts and leisure, live performance, children and family, homelessness, youth commission, and again, disinformation, critical thinking. So these are all kind of things that are out there. Some of those might be folded into existing committees and things like that. And then I think when we have our first, I guess you could say, when we have our first large meeting with the members that have requested it, at that point in time, then if there's other committees that feel that are more desired or more needed in the community, then we can move in that direction.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, so one of the suggestions that I heard a while back was to put together some sort of a packet for new residents. And I think that that, Joe, I just saw you nod your head. So is that already in the works, or is that part of one of these?
It's already happening. We actually already have packets being sent out. COVID delayed a little bit of it. We were working on it in January, February. Once we got everything back in, those packets are being sent out to those people that are new residents. But it has typical things that you would find, obviously, emergency contact information, a letter of welcome, kind of identities about need-to-know numbers or. a letter of welcome, kind of identities about need to know numbers or city services, things like that. Our most recent catalog of events from Parks and Rec, that type of thing. There's some other things in there and I'll make sure to get that list out to council about what it all looks like in the very, if I can get it to you.
Yeah, I think it would be critical information for the renting population to know that, you know, we've got a lot of rental properties that are not exactly the nicest. And I know code enforcement is working very hard to address some of those issues at a number of properties. But I think in order to let people know, you know, to make these things move forward, it's helpful to have people that are willing to allow code enforcement officers into their homes. Because, you know, as things stand legally, they can only look at what's on the outside. But I think most people in town that live in these rental properties, they're aware that there are a multitude of issues in the interiors of a lot of these places that code enforcement will never know about unless they can get inside. So I think we need to make some sort of an announcement to encourage people that are living in some of these, you know, in particular apartment complexes that are maybe not being very well managed, that if they want to have improvements, they need to help the city move forward with that code enforcement.
Yeah, I know with our code enforcement team and city attorney shook, we've actually made a couple of visits already in the last few weeks to properties that are similar to what you described to do that. But I think if, as long as there's no objections from the city attorney as far as kind of an enclosed material about, I guess you'd say almost a tenant bill of rights of sorts, I guess, is what you're referring to. I'll defer to his judgment on the legalities of everything, but I would have no issues including that in there as well. And again, if other council members have suggestions as well, want to see what is typically included in that, we'll, we'll get that out to you.
Just to, just to respond more specifically, the rental registration ordinance that was on for a work session in the spring was set to include a requirement that landlords provide their tenants with a statement setting forth their rights, including their right to request the city to conduct an interior inspection. I expect that that ordinance will come back on this fall. And so that will be something that is required of landlords in our city to make sure their tenants are.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council or questions?
No, I have a quick question. Those packets you was talking about, will they be available at city hall as well for those to just pick up instead of just sending them out to people as well?
Yeah, we do have them, I guess, without getting into the logistics of how the department works. I know there's a stack of them that when they do get the new people moving into the community, they're sent out. So I know there's prepared packets out there in case new members actually come in with that. And a lot of the ways we figure out how to do this is probably in conjunction with our water department as they turn water on in a unified that way. But we'll have, we have them down there for new residents.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, this motion will return to council at its next meeting for approval.
Can I just make one quick suggestion? Would it be possible to have some of those packets placed at the postal, post office across the street, city hall two?
We'd have to, I assume, probably get their permission, but I can walk over there tomorrow and ask.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to reports. Will the clerk please read the clerk of court report?
Yes, Madam President. The clerk of court submitted monies collected from the courts held on May seventh, fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty first, twenty sixth, and twenty eighth. And those monies totaled eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Thank you. Development Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker, you are muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. This is the Development Park and Recreation Committee for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacarrel, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and President Jenkins. The first order of business for the committee is an ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain real property located at seven oh four Wagner Road in Turrell Township, consistent of one hundred and thirty point nine one, owned by Rod, Roderick C. Griffin, Keaton G. Griffin, and Laurel J. Sample, and declaring emergency. Attorney Shook, would you like to speak on this ordinance? Chris, you're muted.
All right. This comes back from the Franklin County Commissioners. Over sixty days ago, they approved a resolution permitting the annexation of this real property into the city of Reynoldsburg. Pursuant to the I revise code, council cannot consider the annexation until sixty days have passed. We are at that point today. This is presented as an emergency because if council does not approve the annexation within a hundred and twenty days, it is automatically deemed to be rejected. And since council is taking August off, it is presented as an emergency. To read or see.
Okay. Um, is there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Is there any from council? Okay, seeing that I moved that we forward this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading as an emergency. As there's no further business for the Development Parks and Recreation Committee, I return this over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, Councilmember Bryant, please.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacarrel, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a police cruiser and related equipment for the K nine unit with the Reynoldsburg Police Department and declaring an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any questions or comments from council?
I have a question. I don't think it was discussed in the last meeting as far as declaring this an emergency. If we can just get an explanation for that, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The reason for the emergency, madam, is that we have canine school starting in October from the Ohio State Highway Patrol. So when we buy these vehicles, we kind of get into a, a list to get the, the assets placed into those vehicles, as you can see from the worksheet. After we buy the vehicle, we have to get it painted. We have to get radio equipment put in. We have to get cameras put in. We have to get computers put in. Those are all from different vendors. And so we wait in the line for each one of these. And we just want to make sure we have the vehicle ready or close to that training that begins in October at the Ohio State Highway Patrol.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a second reading. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Pacarrel. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading. Second item is an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list. First reading was June twenty second, twenty twenty. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any questions from council? Okay. Let's see. Seeing none, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for a second reading. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Pacarrel. This ordinance, I'll see, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading. As there is no further business for the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for July the thirteenth, twenty twenty. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacarrel, Councilmember Lawson Row, Chair Strickland, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty sewer rehabilitation project for the Rose Hill Caesar Road area and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman, are you on the call?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just talk a little bit about this particular ordinance?
Yes, I'm sorry, is this, is this for the water line replacement or the sewer lining? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
This is for the sewer rehabilitation for Rose Hill and Caesar Road.
Sure, so as part of the city of Reynoldsburg EPA mandate, which was passed several years ago, the city is required to camera and inspect a certain percentage of our sewer lines every year on an annual basis. And based on those inspections, we come up with a work plan every year to rehab sections of sewer. This is not where we go and dig in the ground, but we actually insert a liner, basically a sock inside the sanitary sewer line. And we heat it and cure it. And basically, when that's done, it's like, it's like a brand new sewer line. It's a, it's a nice way to do the work where we don't have to go into yards and dig things up. Now, on occasion, if we camera lines and we see that there are major defects, we do have to sometimes dig down and replace those sections. But this is something I think the city, at least from what I've been told, has been doing for the past, you know, five years at least. We went out to bid and received very competitive bids on this, a very reputable company. Bid on this was the lowest and best bidder based on our engineer's evaluation. And that is really the reason for this on the agenda. And the reason for the emergency legislation, as Attorney Shook said earlier, is also since council recess in August. When we bid these out as part of the contract, there are so many days outlined in the contract where we either have to award, award the project or not. So, you know, obviously, we can have this reading, the next reading, but after that, we do have to, to pass this and get the contractor engaged.
Thank you. Also, I know this came before council, I believe, April timeframe. So it did come before council, I believe, back in April. So we just need to, because of COVID nineteen, we're still trying to get on track. Is that correct?
Correct. So what we initially did was we authorized EMHT to perform the study to see which areas we should work on. And based on that study, we went out and then bid the work, which is what we're now asking council to approve, is to actually do the work based on that study.
Thank you, Director Dorman. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any from council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion will be, motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for construction inspection services for the twenty twenty sewer rehabilitation project for the Rose Hill Caesar Road area and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman? Is this pretty much the same? Go ahead.
It is, it is. So basically, if you look at most of our projects, there's two parts to them. One is the actual construction. The second part is someone to actually inspect the work and to approve all the quantities and the pay app and everything like that. So this is basically part two of that, which engages EMHT to do the inspection work on this for the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second? Now get a second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacarrel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the water main replacement project for Rose Hill Caesar Road area and declaring an emergency. Are there any other questions or comments on this legislation?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Strickland. I believe there was a typo there. It isn't Rose Hill, it's Rose Lawn.
Thank you for that, for Rose Lawn. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Any from?
So.
Go ahead, sorry.
So for, like, I'm seeing like that a few of those are declaring with the emergency, we're bringing it in the same reason that the council is going into the, that's my meeting and the mayor of us, that's the reason that we are putting everything in the emergency?
That's correct. Once again, it's, I'm sorry, this, this is the water line replacement project. Just give you a little quick summary. Several years ago, the EPA, as you know, with the Flint water crisis, came out with a lot of rules regarding lead and copper in water lines. So once again, we look at our system every year. We look at where we have the most breaks or we're having maybe pressure issues in the water system. This area is one of those areas, and that's why it's been earmarked for replacement this year. Last year, we did the section to the south of this, the block just south of this. And obviously, when we do this, we look at the service lines too. And if someone has a lead or copper service line, we notify them. They have so many days to hopefully correct that. And we actually do have prices in our bid that would allow the residents or properties to directly work with our contractor to do that and then pay them directly, just since they'll be on site. It definitely helps them out and since they're mobilized and reduces costs. But once again, this is another EPA kind of requirement where it's an enterprise fund, where we use that money to replace our infrastructure and upgrade it as needed to meet all the EPA mandates and standards. And yes, it is. And once again, this is something in the contract, but we are, in the contract, there is verbiage that basically commands us or asks us to authorize the contract within so many days. And by the time council resumes after the August recess, it would be past that time.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Pacarrel. Are there any other questions from the committee? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? This motion will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHT for the construction inspection services for the water main replacement project for Rose Lawn Avenue area, Phase Two, and declaring an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this legislation? From couns, from council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Lawson Row. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number five, an ordinance creating Chapter 973 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Reynoldsburg to permit the city service departments to establish rates and charges for electric vehicle charging station. Are there any, sorry?
Yes, Councilwoman Strickland, this ordinance would create Chapter 973 of the Codified Ordinances. It's very short. It essentially grants the Director of Public Service the right responsibility to set the rates for the EV charging stations at the YMCA and at the Lancaster and Maine parking.
Thank you, Attorney Shuck. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Strickland, I had a question. I just hit the mute button quick enough.
Okay.
I was just wondering, how are the rates going to be determined?
Yeah, so, so my understanding is that we are going to monitor the electricity rates, of course, and ensure that the rate we are setting at is one that would allow the city to break even on the electric cost. It's not a situation where we're trying to make any type of profit off these electric vehicle stations.
Hey, hey, Councilmember Baker, just real quick, if I may. Attorney Shuck and I met with the company that is installing these, and we called around a couple of other cities like Worthington that have already done this and has established rates. So we're using pretty much what's standard across the board with all these other communities.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Lawson Row. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number six, an ordinance establishing Section 351.19 Parking and Electrical Vehicle Charging Station of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Reynoldsburg. Anything, Attorney Shuck?
Yes, Councilwoman Strickland, this goes into our traffic section of our Codified Ordinances. It'll be Section 351.19. It's, it identifies the parking spaces for the EV stations as being only allowed for utilization of the charging station itself and limits parking at those parking spots to a maximum of three consecutive hours. This is, of course, to keep, you know, those particular spots just for charging at those stations.
Thank you, Attorney Shuck. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this legislation?
I have a question about this thing. I was just wondering, is it, the city is deciding how many charging stations to keep? Or who is deciding how many stations that we're putting here?
So that was part of a, that was part of a contract with ED United that was approved last December, I believe, by council and modified after the first of the year. We have two parking spaces for EV charging stations, two at Lancaster and Maine, and then two at the YMCA Community Center. And unless we enter into an additional agreement with ED United in the future, those are the only parking spots that we have that are city-owned that provide electric vehicle charging.
Councilman Pacarrel, I also believe that was part of a grant program as well that kind of kicked the ball off for these particular units. The three that are there are not, were put in, I don't, I believe, at no cost to the city. The only thing that's extended into this is the electric agreement that we were just talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Pacarrel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Thank you, everyone, turning it back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Sobadi, please.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for July 13th, 2020. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. We have one item, an ordinance to establish separate funds for CARES Act funding from Franklin County, Licking County, and Fairfield County, and declaring an emergency. Auditor Sisak, are you willing to enlighten us on this?
Yes, Madam President, Chairman Sobadi. On June 22nd, council passed the motion to accept the CARES Act funding. On June 30th, we received a lump sum of $1,106,316. Now, Phase Two, pursuant to House Bill 481, local governments need to establish a special revenue fund for each one of the coronavirus relief funds. And since we are in three counties, I have them listed down below at the bottom of the ordinance, 203, 204, and 205. Traditionally, we could only open new accounts in, under the authority of the state auditor, but this was changed due to House Bill 481.
Thank you, Auditor Sisak. So do we have any questions on this legislation from the committee? Any questions from council?
Yes, Chairman Sobadi, I have a question. So this CARE Act money, as Attorney Sisak mentioned in an earlier meeting, that there's specific way, specific places where we can spend, what is our plan to spend this money moving forward?
Councilman Pacarrel, appreciate your comment. Fortunately, the decisions on how to spend this money fall under the administration. And I will leave the mayor to answer the, how, what his plans are for it.
Councilman Pacarrel, I can, thank you, Auditor Sisak. I can answer those questions as detailed as you like or as general as you like. Pretty much anything that has been impacted by COVID, it is not revenue-related. So we can't use this money to shore up, you know, funds that are lacking because of the lack of revenue, because income tax losses. What we can do is anytime that our personal protective equipment, our ability to get some of their equipment for people that were working from home is a possibility. We added a seasonal staff worker for the farmer's market because of the essential nature of that service to maintain the cleanliness. And if you've been to the farmer's market, you know that you're getting sprayed when you come in, and there's a count and things of that nature. If you're looking at some of our officers from the police department that have experienced any kind of issues that are COVID-related, whether it's traffic patrol for the food pantries and things of that nature. Again, these are things that are very specific to COVID-related issues. It's not something that we can use for anything that doesn't have that restriction in there. It cannot be for anything that was used, that it was budgeted for earlier in the year. It has to be something very specific to COVID. And each one of the directors was emailed from the auditor's office tonight. I forwarded on that we're doing a line item of every penny that we're spending for this. So that way, everybody knows where the money is going to and how it relates to the COVID spending from this point forward.
Thank you.
Auditor Sisak, is this a, is this a two-read emergency or?
Two reads is fine. We have the money, it's in the bank. I just need to be able to account for it and with your permission separately.
Got it. So any more questions from council? Okay, so I move to forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from councilperson Strickland. Any further discussion on this item? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. There's no more business before the Finance and Administration Committee, so I'll return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Legislation for emergency approval. Would the clerk please read item 10A?
An ordinance requiring face coverings in any public space to limit the spread of COVID-19 and declaring an emergency, with the first reading held on July 7th.
Attorney Shuck, would you like to explain the changes to this ordinance?
Yes, as council is aware, the Ohio Department of Health issued an order on July 8th, 2020, mandating facial coverings at all times indoors and outside when unable to maintain social distancing. That order went in effect for all counties that are designated as Level 3, on a Level 3 public health advisory alert. There were, on July 10th, additional counties added to that list. So originally, there was Franklin County, which is relevant to us. And then on July 10th, Fairfield County was added as a Level 3 advisory alert. The ordinance language now is in line and consistent with the state order so that we don't have any inconsistencies with regard to enforcement throughout the city or expectations throughout the city. Licking County is the only county in the city that is not on a Level 3 or Level 4 public health advisory. So that's the only county that would really be encompassed within this particular ordinance. In addition, Section 5 of the ordinance has been modified so that there is an automatic trigger to terminate the ordinance at a time in which neither of the three counties are on a Level 3 or a Level 4 public health advisory alert.
Is there any other discussion regarding this ordinance from council?
Is it me?
Go ahead.
All right. I won't take too long. So I wanted to make, hopefully, a brief statement on this legislation. Hopefully, I won't ramble. As many know, my day job is a scientist. And over the last four or five months, as a scientist, I've followed this issue quite, quite, quite closely. And so I just wanted to lay out a couple real basic reasons on my thinkings about this legislation. For starters, this virus is what they call a novel virus. Not going to go into that too deeply, but basically, what that means is there's no vaccine for this virus. It's, it's a brand-new virus. We don't know much about it, although we've learned a lot over the last few months. One of the things we also don't know about this virus is the long-term, the long-term immunity. You know, what, what the antibodies to this virus actually mean long-term. They could, they could be good for, you know, lifetime, they could be good for a month. We're starting to get data on that. We're starting to get some real good data on that. It just hasn't been long enough for us to know, know what those characteristics are, that this allows us to think about anything in regards to such things as herd immunity because we simply don't know enough, to know enough. There are, the cases across Ohio, across the United States continue to increase. And yes, I know, I know very well that the cases increased because we've increased testing. That, we've known that all along. But what it comes down to for me is whether we are increasing testing or not, the fact of the matter is, is that there are still thousands and thousands of people out there that have this virus actively. And that, that worries me. And, and, you know, maybe we've gotten, we've topped that out because of the amount of testing we had, we were doing, maybe we haven't. So, so those are the reasons, you know, those are the things about the virus that worry me. I've also, I've looked at every single attachment that, every person that, that's sent something to us has included, I've looked at attachments from people on Facebook. I've looked at attachments from people who have contacted me personally. And, and I've looked at tons and tons of data for myself, and I found no credible evidence that there is any, anything to lead me to believe that wearing a cloth face mask or even a surgical mask or an N95 mask is at all dangerous to any person other than a couple very specific situations where people are ill. So those are the official reasons. The unofficial reasons are from me as a citizen, me as a father. I have a son who's going to be a senior in high school. He's a band member. I'd like for him to have some semblance of a senior year of high school. I'd love for him to have a band season. I'd love for him to have a graduation. I'd love for him to have a Thanksgiving and a Christmas. And to be quite honest with you, the only way I see that happening is if I, as a father and I as a councilman, do everything in my power to make that happen. And I personally feel that this ordinance is absolutely the least we could do as members of council, to ensure that I will yield the floor.
Just as councilwoman Strickland, thank you, City Attorney Shuck, for, you know, making those modifications, make sure we align with the state ordinance. So thank you so much for that. Also, I want to thank everyone who, you know, called in, who actually sent a letter. I too, you know, read each one of them and really took it to heart. You know, and what I've told people is that we have to love each other enough to protect one another, to protect our, our economy, to protect our neighbors. And again, I don't really, I do not enjoy wearing a mask. However, I personally know people that has been impacted by that horrible virus who's had COVID-19 and still the lasting impact, where they can't breathe, they have good and bad days. It's still, it's still affecting them today. And so, again, my heart is really protecting one another, protecting our economy, and doing what's best for our city. And so, thank you once again for everyone who called in, you know, for pros and cons. That's what this city council was made of, making sure that we hear your voice. And we did hear you. And I did too, you know, did the, the research and, and made sure that I was making the right decision to move this ordinance forward. But once again, thank you so much for everyone who commented.
I'd like to say a few things. First of all, we hear a lot about masks infringing on people's rights, their constitutional rights, and that simply could not be more untrue. It has nothing to do with your constitutional rights. We do many things with law. We do many things with law that, you know, make requirements of people, such as wearing seat belts, not drinking and driving, you know, not smoking in public places. And, you know, this is something that, you know, while I don't like the idea of having to mandate this, you know, I had hoped that, you know, the better angels in us would have, you know, resorted in mask wearing, but it hasn't. And you know, we're at war. You know, the president has told us several times, you know, we are at war with a virus. And that being the case, you know, it is our duty as Americans to join in this fight against this virus. And the way we do that is by protecting each other, just as soldiers would at any war. And, you know, we are community members, we are neighbors, we are, you know, athletic boosters together, we're band boosters together, we're, you know, PTO groups together, you know, we are, you know, better together, and we are going to be better together by wearing masks to protect each other. It's not hard, nobody enjoys it. You know, this, this past week, I've been out of town in 90-plus degree weather, which I believe it's also 90 degrees there. But, you know, I've ended up with my mask being wet from sweating. And so that's definitely not enjoyable, but I do it to protect the people around me, many of whom I don't know, most of whom I don't know. And that's our duty as American citizens is to protect each other and stand up together and be, you know, this is our patriotic duty, if you will, we are a nation at war. And, you know, unfortunately, it's coming down to a mandate because we cannot rely upon all of the soldiers in this fight to wear their equipment. So that's my two cents.
Madam President, may I address the floor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lawson-Roe, please.
Thank you. Not too long ago, whenever we had a very engaged conversation, if we will, I, I shared that laws don't change hearts. But we must change hearts and laws change hearts. And when laws are changed, our behaviors change. And when behaviors change, that's when we begin prodding and molding at that heart. And so I wrote down a few things that I'd like to share, just so that I wouldn't forget any points that I wanted to make sure that I conveyed. There is no one way to attack this enemy. Wearing a mask is one of many. You may not agree with this tactic. One thing we can agree on is we love our family, our community and our country. Oftentimes, we take one for the betterment of family or country. You may not like seatbelt laws, but by golly, you encourage your 16-year-old to build up. You may enjoy smoking, but encourage your grandkids not to indulge. My 19-year-old daughter wears a mask four days a week, 10 hours a day in a hot warehouse as an essential employee. Not because she wants to, because that's her company's policy. And I can share with you, when, one time we visited the Reynoldsburg Farmer's Market, and she exercised her right not to wear a mask. And she chose to sit in the car while I shopped at the farmer's market. And I respected her for saying, no, I don't want to wear my mask, mom, I'll sit in the car and wait on you. So I'd just like to share with you, Madam President, Mayor Begney, members of council and neighbors here in Reynoldsburg, what I can do and what I will do is wear a mask. I'll use my personal influence to encourage my family, friends and others to wear a mask. When I choose not to wear a mask, I'll remain at home in the car and surrounded by my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I thank you, Council President. And first of all, I think it's a time, I just want to first of all, say, say thank you to all the healthcare workers, again, police and frontline workers, because they have been spending their time. And at a difficult time, they can say no, but they are not telling no, they're going to work and they're protecting us. And I reached out to many doctors and asked them about their opinion first and asked for the medical journals from around the, around the globe. And studied for last several days, I really studies really, really international journals. And I wanted to dig out the fact about these masks. And I, when I reached out to surgeons and doctors, they were telling, they are wearing those masks all day throughout, and they are not having any kind of issues by wearing those masks in the hospital where they have to do. And also same thing with the construction workers, they're also wearing that for so long. And I did not find any kind of negative impact out of wearing those masks. And going into this COVID situation, there's a lot of evidence that is found that when we, when people are wearing the mask, that it can reduce the spread, may not be perfect, but at least reduce up to certain extent. So that way, if we wear the mask, I can, can protect all of us. So with that findings and with that advice from the doctors and other people who are expert in that field, I'm convinced that putting on masks in the public places or maintaining a social distance is the appropriate thing. And as a city, we need to do that. And in addition to this, I also want to bring up like, this is one way to reduce this COVID-19 from our community, and also we need to do a testing. So in Reynoldsburg, then July 27, the new testing site is coming up. Thank you, Mayor, for working on these things, Franklin County Public Health, City of Reynoldsburg, City of, Reynoldsburg City School, and Primary One Health, all of them are working together to make this happen. So I think with the testing site, with the mask, we can move forward and get this enemy out of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make a very brief, because everybody then already hit on the points that I was going to say. I just want to first thank the community for submitting their questions and their comments to council, because each council member read those and took them to heart, though we might not agree with every statement that was said. But that's part of the political process, that's part of America, that we have this discussion to talk about things that are not easy to talk about. But this is one of the things where we all need to come together and wear our masks to try to end this as soon as possible. COVID is a, is a terrible thing and it's taken away a lot of things, whether it's normal, normal life of every day, normal life, I'm sorry, or it's taken away seniors graduating and so forth. But in order to finally defeat this.
We'll give him a few minutes to reconnect.
He said it would be brief. While we're waiting for him, am I, can you hear my? I'll share a comment. Councilman Savadi, thank you for your comments, and I think one of the, I don't know, misnomers out there is, is talking about masks harming ones and, you know, I think that's been inflated by some that have different agendas, but the only caution I think with masks is wearing is how we handle them. Like, you know, people wearing a mask, putting in their hands on their face, it, it can become a nuisance. I think that's the one cautionary note, but aside from that, I think you're, you're very right of knowing the very minimal risks of, of people wearing masks. So I, I think not a reality that those masks can truly harm people trying to wear them with the right intentions. I also wanted to ask then Attorney Shook, on this legislation, still how we're differing from the state. Again, I see at the end in section five that, you know, this, at least now we've built in a, a time that will, the ordinance will expire. But what else throughout this differs from the, the state version? Has Reynoldsburg gotten more restrictive? Is it more detailed, or is the state's maybe not as much?
It is, it is nearly identical to the state. The only, the only other major difference would be under section four. So under the revised code, anyone who violates a Department of Health order is technically guilty of a second-degree misdemeanor, which carries potential jail time. Not that I've heard of anybody actually getting jail time for that. But under our section four, it is only a civil penalty. And for an individual, it's a fine of $55, it's not a secondary misdemeanor. So it's actually less, less significant than the ODH.
Okay. But now that being said, though, still, if you are found in violation of this, the county, the state order would supersede this, though, in terms of the penalty of it.
It, it could, but, you know, we have obviously discretion with our police officers if they are the ones who are in the mission to enforce. And I don't imagine that any of those officers have any real interest in charging someone under the revised code, if we have the option of issuing a citation under the city code. And again, I, I don't know that, and I'm not aware of any citations that we've issued up until this point for any violations of the Ohio Department of Health. It's, it's, it's actually similar to, so we have, we have certain laws under our classified ordinances that they have under the state. Most of the time, our officers are citing people under the city classified licenses.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council? At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the changes made by Attorney Shook as presented in this council packet. May I have one motion, please?
I'll second their motion.
Who made the first motion?
I'll take it.
Okay, Councilmember Baker, may I have a second, please? Councilmember Strickland, second, would the clerk please call the roll to amend this ordinance?
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
And this is just amending the ordinance that we're, that we're doing here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Fine, aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
The motion passed 4-0.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding this ordinance? At this time, I would like to have a motion to approve this ordinance as amended. May I have a motion to amend the ordinance?
So moved.
I'm sorry, who? Bryant, thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Savadi, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was 6-1.
Attorney Shook, did you, was there something you wanted to say?
No, I think there was a little bit of a breakup as, as there was a motion to approve the ordinance. And I, I had misinterpreted it from my ears, sounded like amend the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
The vote was 6-1?
Yes.
To approve this ordinance as amended, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read item 10B?
An ordinance to approve and authorize the execution and delivery of amendment number two to the Joint Economic Development District Contract Number Two between Etna Township and the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. The first read was June 22.
Item 11 is legislation for first reading.
Madam President, we need to actually vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to explain any changes to this ordinance, please?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Council President. So this is a very positive development in one of our jet districts, jet district number two. It has several parcels that are located in Etna Township. And there's a developer who is going to come in and build out some revenue generating businesses out in two of the parcels, one is located on National Road in Etna Township, and the other is located on Ming Street in Etna Township. I'm asking council to amend the ordinance to add the additional parcel on Ming Street. That's going to be a 44-acre project. The reason that we are amending the jet agreement is to adjust the distribution percentages to account for more money to go to Southwest Licking School District. That is an exchange, full district agreeing to a tax abatement on these properties that would facilitate this particular. This is presented as an emergency because the developer is asking to break ground here in the next four weeks. And if the city does not approve, the developer is indicated to pull out of the project.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember?
So I just want to let this, this item does come from the Development Parks and Recreation Committee. And I, I just want to make the motion to amend the ordinance and accept the changes submitted by Attorney Shook.
Yes. Is there a second or? Councilmember Baker moved to amend the ordinance?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember? Meredith Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
Madam President, that was a 7-0 vote to amend the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion regarding this ordinance as amended? May I have a motion to approve this ordinance as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Pecorale, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Councilmember Baker, thank you, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pecorale?
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was 7-0 to approve the ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 11, legislation for a first reading, would the clerk please read item 11A?
An ordinance to approve and authorize the execution and I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Eleven A.
Yes, I've got the wrong one here. Just a moment.
Okay.
An ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain real property located at seven oh four Waggoner Road in Turo Township consisting of one hundred thirty-eight point zero one plus or minus acres owned by Roderick C. Griffin, Kitten G. Griffin, and Laura J. Sample, and declaring an emergency. Madam President, that is not what you have, but that is the, that is a ward, ordinance number eleven.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes, Madam President, uh this item comes from the Development Park and Recreation Committee, and I would like for this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Is there a second?
No, we don't.
No, this is a first.
We don't, it's a first reading, I'm sorry, scratch that. Are there any questions or comments? This ordinance will stand for its first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven B?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty sewer rehabilitation project for the Rose Hill Kaiser Road area and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Strickland, please.
Yes, Madam President, um this ordinance comes from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Unless there's any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for its first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven C?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHNT for admitted for construction inspection services for the twenty twenty sewer line rehabilitation for Rose Hill and Kaiser Road area and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Strickland, please.
President Jenkins, this ordinance will come, come from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Thank you. Unless there's any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for its first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven D?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the water main replacement project for Rose Lawn Avenue Phase Two and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Strickland, please.
Yes, Madam President, this ordinance comes from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Unless there are any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven C?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHNT for construction services, inspection services for the water main replacement project for Rose Lawn Avenue area Phase Two and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Strickland, please.
Yes, Madam President, this ordinance comes from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Yes, unless there are any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven? E F, I'm sorry, eleven F.
An ordinance creating chapter nine seventy-three of the codified ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg to permit the city service department to, to establish rates and charges for electric vehicle charging stations.
Councilmember Strickland.
Yes, Madam President, this ordinance comes from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Unless there are any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven G?
An ordinance establish, establishing section three five one point one nine parking at electrical vehicle charging stations of the codified ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg.
Councilmember Strickland.
Madam President, this ordinance comes from the Public Service and Transport, Transportation Committee. I will, I would like this order to stand for a first reading.
Unless there are any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven H?
An ordinance to establish separate funds for CARES Act funding from Franklin County, Licking County, and Fairfield County and declaring an emergency.
Yes, um Councilmember. The body.
Our body, yes, yes.
Thanks, President Jenkins. This item comes from the Finance and Administration Committee, and I asked it to stand for its first reading.
Thank you. Unless there are any questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Item twelve, consent agenda for second reading. Would the clerk please read item twelve A and B?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a police cruiser and related equipment for the K nine unit with the Reynoldsburg Police Department and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance authorizing city, the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list.
Items twelve A and B are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances stand for a second reading. Unless someone wants to remove an item for discussion, council will move forward with the consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading. We'll move on to item thirteen. If there are any other council matters, if anyone from council would like to discuss or have any other business at this time?
Yes, um Madam President, um there's a couple of things I would like to share uh with the public and also uh with council. Um I was, I asked um our clerk, pressure to uh do a little research regarding how many emergency legislation has been passed compared from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, from January uh to the end uh or January to twenty nineteen to July twenty nineteen. And compared to where our council has been doing regarding um starting in January twenty twenty to the end of uh July of twenty twenty. And thank you, Ms. uh Pressure, for doing this, getting this information for me. So just to share regarding how we've been doing regarding the legis, emergency legislation. In twenty nineteen, there were eighty-seven total pieces of legislation. Fifty-seven of those eighty-seven were emergencies. That equals out to sixty-six percent. In twenty twenty thus far, we have fifty-eight total pieces of legislation. Thirty of those fifty-eight were emergency. So we are at fifty-two percent. So I know there's been some talk regarding um this council, you know, doing emergency legislation. But we are um right now doing pretty good compared to where we were last year. Um so I just want to make sure that um number one, you know, our directors, they're getting their, their information in earlier and working very closely with council, so I appreciate that. And this council is asking those questions to make sure that we're just not putting, pushing through emergency um legislation. So I just wanted to make sure that I share that, that um information uh with council and also with our uh neighbors to uh, you know, keep us um you know, in tune on what's going on. Uh but again, I wanted to make sure that I share that. So compared to, to last year at sixty-six percent this time, um and currently we on track for fifty-two percent. So thank you.
Thank you for doing that research and bringing that forward. That's good information to know. And I know that we all try to do our best to ask those important questions so that our neighbors know exactly what we're doing and why. Um we may know the answers sometimes, but we still have to ask those important questions. So I appreciate everyone on council asking those questions because even though we may know the answers, our neighbors don't always know those answers to some of those questions that we're asking. So that's very important to know, and thank you for bringing that forward. Do we have any other um questions or comments from anyone on council or anything that you would like to discuss at this time?
Uh, Madam President, can I take a point of privilege real quick?
Yes.
Um, I just wanna uh say today is my son's birthday, and I just wanna tell him happy birthday. It's his fourth. And so he ripped through the cakes that we got for him, so sorry, no, y'all, there's none left. I just wanted to say happy birthday to my son.
Thank you. Uh we appreciate that. It's, it's very important uh that we recognize our children. So yes, um we all wish him a very happy birthday, fourth birthday. I know it's not the same. Can't go to Chuck E. Cheese or wherever you normally would go. So we have to celebrate as best as we can, and we have to make it known that we, you know, celebrate our children. So and we all have children and pets that sometimes are in the background that we hear that we're not asking to be a part of this meeting. So um yes, tell him happy birthday. Uh do we have any other comments or anything that anyone would like to discuss?
Um just wanted to. Uh it just, just wanted to remind people that we have uh food trucks doing the neighborhood pickup at Indian Creek uh tomorrow night is um the Latin Flare. Uh Friday night is, I believe, curbside dish. And then Friday or Saturday night, um we have a double feature with Aloha Aina. Just Hawaiian food and a cheesecake truck called uh Sweet Cheese. And uh also earlier in the day, um around lunchtime on Saturday will be Betty's Kitchen.
Thank you. Uh I'd like to ask a question. Um Mayor Begney, do you know how things have been going with our movie theaters on Saturday? I know some people that have attended, but can you give us a little update on that? I haven't been to the movies, but just would like an update on how that's going.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Our first uh movie night was actually canceled due to weather. But our second one this past weekend, uh where Star Wars was the future, uh was quite successful. Uh it was also successful earlier in the evening as there was a uh food drive for Helping Hands Food Pantry uh collected and monitored by members of the Imperial Order uh from Star Wars. Some people dressed in costumes, uh may have even seen Darth Vader supporting the Reynoldsburg football team out there as well. Uh so that was this weekend. Um there were a few less cars there, but the people were, the cars were packed that were there. Twenty-seven cars, probably averaging about three people per car. Our next uh movie is going to be, I believe, on August August eighth, and it's everybody's favorite, Frozen Two, so I'm sure all of you will be in attendance for that. Uh so that will be there on August eighth. And again, they'll have an opportunity to uh, you know, when I say purchase tickets, you're not actually purchasing them. You're just rever, reserving your spot. We can maintain social distancing. Uh it started off at Tippit Park. It was great success. They had a really good time. Um people were happy to be out of the house and, but still close enough to, you know, to maintain that social distancing. I did have one other quick comment, uh depending on which version of the packet you're looking at. Our BZAB, uh BZBA meeting is not July sixteenth, it's actually the twenty-third. Uh so that is just one small change that's on there, and there is a potential um potential for a special planning commission meeting. It depends on if a number of developers that are working on some things, if they get the information and in time. So hopefully uh by the uh, by next week, we'll have a better idea and we can start talking about some new businesses coming for Reynoldsburg, so.
Thank you. Madam President.
Lawson Row.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to share, I had the opportunity, many of us did, to pay our final respects to Mr. Clement. Um I was able to um attend during his calling hours. And it was a tremendous walk down memory lane just to see um all that he has um done in terms of public service uh throughout the city in his various roles. And so it was um, like I said, a walk down memory lane. There's so much risk, history that he had poured into this city. And I just wanted to acknowledge him um once again for his service and thank his family for sharing him with us. And I count it an honor that I was able to um talk to him in the middle of um of March, right when the pandemic hit, and we had a great conversation. And so that will remain um in my hearts um forever.
Thank you. Do we have any?
His memorial was very nice, and I gotta give a shout out to Councilman Cotner because it was nice. The mail would have proved of it.
Yeah, thanks, thanks again. Um I also attended and um everything was laid out perfect. Um and he did it his way, so uh Mr. Clements will be missed.
That song was definitely playing when I walked in the door, and I was nailed to the teeth.
Only thing I wish uh, we, we missed out on, he needs his three minutes, man. He said when he left, he'd be back.
Absolutely.
The only thing we're missing from him. But quite a special person, yeah.
Yes. Do we have any other items to discuss this evening? Okay, with um, I'd like to thank everyone for participating in this virtual meeting this evening. Council's next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July the twenty-seventh. That meeting will be held virtually beginning at six thirty. And if there's no other further business, I will adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-eight. Everyone have a good evening and stay safe. Thank you. Good night.